Welcome, everybody, to our June meeting of the Schuylkill Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Pleasure to have all of you here. The meeting will be videotaped by the township. Is anyone else taping the meeting? Anyone else here, if you would please come up and sign the roster that you were here, I'd appreciate it, please. The form is right here in pens and everything like that. Couple of comments I had, I don't know if all of you noticed, that in our census update, more than seventy-eight point nine percent of the growth of Pennsylvania's population now live in townships. Only, it's risen quite a bit. While boroughs declined six point three percent, as of 2013, though, fifty-six percent lived in townships, twenty-four percent point three lived in, or lived in the cities and nineteen point seven lived in the boroughs. Also, there's going to be a transportation improvement program, a TIPS program with public comment, from May thirtieth to June thirtieth, so if anybody wants to make any comments of 2014, be my guest. Barbara, do you want to say anything about your $30,000 grant at all?
Oh, well, I'm excited that the initiative that was brought to us by the Friends of Valley Forge Park, working with Valley Forge Christian College, as well as the Freedoms Foundation, has resulted in our being slated to receive a $30,000 grant for the feasibility study from Chester County Vision Partnership Program. And this would, this study will help us to determine the possibility of establishing a trail between Valley Forge National Park through the Freedoms Foundation, the Christian College property, the Girl Scouts, and onward to either Phoenixville or the Schuylkill River Trail. We've also received funding from the Phoenixville Community Health Foundation. We have a small piece of it in our budget, but the major portion of the $60,000 cost will be given to us through the grant programs. And Mary, we should receive, I did not receive any definitive information, but there's one other grant still outstanding, and I'm hopeful that we'll be awarded that grant as well.
I haven't seen anything.
No. But in any case, I know Morris Quigg is willing to serve as, on the task force with regard to working with Gilmore and Associates, and Sandy, who is here this evening from our Historic Commission Chair, Ginny Stierle, who literally knows the lay of the land quite well, and I believe that the EAC has also appointed somebody at this point in time. So, the Open Space Commission did not meet in May, but will work with them to have a participant. So, Martha, thank you for your editing and your help, and it's something that I'm hopeful there will be established a feasible way, so that our township residents and visitors can have a view of the river, and also link up with perhaps the Greater Valley Forge TMA in bringing visitors to the park to these important areas of our township. Thanks, Fred.
Does anybody, everybody read over the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Any changes?
No, sir.
Okay. Is acceptance of reports and the minutes of last meeting, I'd like to hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any comments?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Two-minute reports, do we have anything on?
Regional planning, I do, very brief.
Okay.
Okay. The Phoenixville Regional Planning Group, of which I'm the liaison from our Board of Supervisors, met last week, and we're advertising an RFP for a different consultant to work with this five municipality group that advises the Borough of Phoenixville and our local northern Chester County townships on development plans and various things that spread across our region. So, it's a work in progress, but a, it was, there were improvements to be made, and I'm hopeful that the RFP will indicate those improvements. The person who had been the liaison for many years is no longer employed by KSK, the consultants who had been paid to work with the group. And some of us had some difficulty with the person who was the legal counsel to this group as well. So, it's a work in progress, but it is progress.
Okay, thank you very much, Barbara. Any more?
I've got an announcement, but quick, Fred.
Okay.
Last Friday resulted in a application, a grant application filed with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, taking up an opportunity for funding that they are basically managing, federal funds and state funds, to focus on a transportation community development initiative, with a particular focus on non-vehicle type of transportation So, having seen the scope of the grant opportunity, we thought we could take advantage of that and develop a proposal for a feasibility study. This was discussed last month, by the way. We voted to apply for it, and I guess the news is, we did apply for it, a feasibility study grant. We're applying for $75,000 from DBRPC, and it looks like we'll be matching that with about $25,000, if we get it. Okay, so, but this is a highly competitive grant. DBRPC is the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, covers the Eighth County area. The initial meeting on the grant, for information purposes, was down in their offices in Philadelphia back in March, and it was basically packed, the room was packed. So, it's, if we by chance get it, we'll be lucky. The decision is not going to be instantaneous, it looks like their timeframe is September to make the grant awards. So, we'll keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully, you know, things, positive things will happen.
So, I'm sorry, Jim, they're going to decide in September, or they will announce in September?
They will announce their awards in September.
Okay, good.
Nice job.
And as a, by the way, their timeframe is basically, starting in June, they're going to be evaluating these grant applications. You know, it's a time-consuming process, as you might imagine, given all the potential applicants here, so.
Now, you said the room was packed when you were there in March?
Yeah, you know, at least a hundred people.
Okay.
So, we will see.
Thank you, Jim. I like Jason's calls of fire to chief report, very interesting. It was opening my eyes a little bit to a number of things that you do, so. All right, let's have our treasures report. How are we doing for money in this township?
Okay, as of May 31st, we have just over $1.7 million of balance in our general fund. Let me see, our expenditures for the year were a little over forty percent, which is exactly right where we should be, which is really good, considering the horrendous winter that we had, so we're in good shape there. And we're about sixty, just over sixty percent of our revenues, so we're in fabulous shape. I reviewed the bills this morning, and everything is good to go, as far as payments are concerned, so we can pay the bills.
Did everybody get the treasures report and read it over?
Yep.
Take a look at it. Any comments?
No.
Or a motion to accept the treasures report?
Certainly.
And pay the bills?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? So moved. Under announcements, I don't know, is anybody going to the legislative breakfast tomorrow morning?
No, I can't.
No.
All right, just wanted to know.
Are you?
Okay, that's with Jim Gerlock and Patrick Meenan. It's really about federal transportation funding. It's going to start at 7:30 tomorrow morning, the Downingtown Country Club.
Are you going?
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Barbara, do you want to talk about the, our?
The town tour?
Yes.
Well, we have.
The Historical Commission's going to have the Historic Society invite a resident to an evening with the Revolutionary War?
Yes, it'll be, for those of you who may not be aware, the township has an arrangement with the Phoenixville Country Club, so that we can have four free, open-to-the-public meetings per year at the, at the country club. The first was in March, with our council and commissions talking about what they do, and the second will be on Thursday evening, June 12th, 7:30. Janet, you are?
You are.
She is the author of a book about Nathaniel Green, and he stayed at Moore Hall, which is in Schuylkill Township.
Set up his headquarters.
You, maybe you ought to do this, because you're on top of this more than I, Sandy.
It's General Nathaniel Green, who was close associate of General George Washington, of course, and he set up his headquarters in Moore Hall, down on West Street 23 today. And Moore Hall is one of the oldest properties in our township, and it's on the National Register of Historic Places, and it's also considered one of the finest Georgian examples of architecture in Chester County. And the book she's written is actually a historical novel, it's all based on research, in fact, and includes a lot about this area, and of course, the headquarters where he was. So, it should be an interesting lecture. She's written several similar-type things, all different subjects. She's coming down from Massachusetts to do the lecture for us, and she will have books available for signing, of course.
Thank you. It's a very unique event, and something, obviously, that relates very closely to our township and its, and its history.
The date of that?
Thursday, June 12th, 7:30. And then Thursday, July 24th, the Chester County Town Tours, every year sponsors special tours in various locations around Chester County. And this, this year, the Historical Society of Phoenixville area and the Schuylkill River Heritage Center are cosponsoring a walking tour in Phoenixville, and it's titled, "At Phoenix, It's the People That Makes the Difference," and focusing on not only historic places, but the marvelous diversity that resulted from the multicultural heritage of anyone who wanted a job could get one at the Phoenix Iron and Steel Company. So, that is at 5:30 on Thursday, the 24th of July, and there are brochures here, if not that one, there are many different tours throughout the county that'll be held throughout the summer.
For those that are interested in Revolutionary War history, the town tour at Historic Yellow Springs will be June 26th, on Thursday evening, and the program is going to be based on the Battle of the Claws, which was just over the hill in Mount Vernon, and it's one of the three battles of the war in Chester County. It had the most troops on the field in that battle in the Revolutionary War, and General Washington actually commanded the field, she did not do it all battles in the war. So, it's very significant, and significant at the Yellow Springs is that he marched there in retreat and set up headquarters there. So, you will learn about the Battle of the Claws, the man who ran the program for saving significant battlefields will be there, and this is a national project for saving battlefields, so he will be giving the logistics of the battle, and then you'll learn about the participation of the Historic Yellow Springs.
Is that when it became a hospital?
Following that, this, he was there in September, they marched into Battle of the Claws in December, and that's when the medical pension was realized, the hospital started in December of 77, and ran until 1781, when after the troops had left Valley Forge.
The June meeting of the Schuylkill Township Open Space Commission is going to be held on Tuesday, June 17th. Tuesday, June 17th, instead of the last Monday of the month, for open space. And you just announced about June 25th, the Schuylkill's going to be recognized for the Historic Resource Atlas on June 25th. The Household Hazardous Waste Collection event is scheduled for Friday, June 20th, at 3:00 PM, at Coatsville Ninth and Tenth Grade Center for hazardous waste material. And, last but not least, or not last either, the Township Administration Office is going to be closed on Friday, July 4th, for observance of Independence Day. And Jim, would you give us some information about the 100% backed by our police department to contact our legislators on the radar, the focus on police radar?
Yeah, this has been something that's been going on for years. Every year they bring up, they put more restrictions on it, and it kind of just dies out.
Okay.
State police kind of have the, they put so many restrictions on us to use, it's maybe it's going to be a money maker for us.
Okay.
Actually, don't make any money expectations.
Seems like we have more announcements than we have on our agenda.
Okay. Is this going to be the record-short meeting?
It will be, if I can get it through here. The, is there any public participation on any item that's on the agenda, on the agenda? Being none, we'll move right into the business of the agenda then. Oh, business, legal matters, Bill?
Fred, a few legal matters. First, the Gray case, an arbitration was held here on May 28th, an application for heart and lung benefits, and we expect a decision within 30 days. The Schaller case for disability pension is pending, and I do need about five minutes in executive session to bring the update on that, legal issues that require confidential discussion there. As to the communications tower, the legal terms have all been worked out, there's only one term remaining, and it has to do with the financial terms, and I'd like, again, three minutes in executive session to talk about your options there. And the first meeting was held concerning the negotiation with the police union for the contract, which will begin January 1st, 2015, and that's my report, thanks.
And the follow-up to the 180-foot request from the zoning hearing board?
That's the DePaulo case, and there's another hearing, I'm sorry, taking place on June 22nd.
June 26th.
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 That's two different batches, zoning hearing.
Correct, and the radio tower, right.
Right.
All right, the next item, this is a continued discussion regarding the stormwater concerns of Jones Lane. I hear any comments from my colleagues?
If you could fill me in, since I was not present at last month's meeting, that would be helpful.
Anybody want to talk about that?
The substance of your discussion?
Yes.
The cliff note version, Barb, is 1637 Jones Lane has a ton of water running through, and there's a ton of damage and whatever from the runoffs. And I think we were going to work with the engineer on figuring out if we could mitigate it or do something so that it's not all dumping in his yard.
Thank you.
I think at the last meeting, there was a handout, and you could see all the pictures on there. So, I think the homeowner is here this evening, and he can go into a little more detail.
We spoke on the phone a long time ago, and it's nice to meet you in person, unfortunately, under these circumstances.
That cliff note, short enough for you?
Yep, absolutely.
Yep, so, and now he was going a little more detail than I did, but I just, a short, short version of it, so that you understand it.
Well, for the public record, I'm in sympathy with his problems, and they're certainly not of his making, and being a neighbor, and knowing, knowing that area. We have to, I know as a township, we have to be careful in terms of setting precedence and doing stuff. But nevertheless, stormwater management is a, an issue for the township, and if the water is running where it shouldn't, maybe there is some way that we can work with this homeowner for the good of the township.
If I could just make a comment on this.
Sure, go ahead, Jim.
Typically, Mary can chime in here, but typically, from my knowledge of what we do, we control stormwater basically on township roads by using where necessary some berm curving, asphalt curving. A prime example of this is Joe Howard Road, if it comes to mind. And it's generally fairly effective, it's basically a directional mechanism for the water to go someplace else. The tricky part about Horseshoe Trail, it looks to me anyway, is that someplace else is that that, where you are is not very wide. But having said that, and we're a bit of a disadvantage here not having our township engineer here, but.
Jim, I think we're talking about two different things, or two presentations last month. One was the Jennings for the Horseshoe Trail.
I'm sorry.
The gentleman here tonight is for 1637 Jones.
Yeah, yeah, I know, but what I meant, meant to refer to is not Horseshoe Trail itself, but Horseshoe Trail Road, okay, which basically gathers the water that dumps on you, right? Okay. So, it seems to me there should be some way that we can do some redirection with curbing that will help you out, which is not, you know, it's not something that we haven't done, okay? We just have, had a thing with Cleona Avenue here, back and forth, in one property, and it looks like it's getting resolved, but, you know, it's, it's various places in the township we try to, we try to accommodate residents, to the extent we can, within the township's right-of-way.
I think one of the biggest things we need to look at is if we're redirecting water, where is it being redirected to? And are we creating a larger problem somewhere else?
Yeah, my next question.
And the township can only work, really, within its own waterways, not on private property.
Generally speaking, these water issues don't involve the township, so we have to be careful about precedent, and it, you know, my observation would be that if the township committed to fix every water problem in the township, we'd go broke or triple our taxes.
We couldn't even afford the salt for the winter, right?
So, the, the concept is we have to be careful about our observations and our promises, and what we can do and can't do, because legally, your obligation is very limited.
May I ask, am I allowed to ask the homeowner a question? Do you mind?
I'm just answering.
Okay. When did you purchase your home?
Roughly three years ago.
Did you know that there were water problems with the home previous to you purchasing it?
The rock ditch was there, and there were some water issues. However, some of the curbing that's been put in and the repaving has made it much, much worse, as I and the neighbors who were here last month tested to. So, that's correct. Unfortunately, the curbing has helped in many other residences, but as Mary stated, I am the guy that took the brunt of where all that water now goes. So, there was runoff there a substantial amount when I bought the property. It's drastically increased, unfortunately. Now, you know, so much that I can't manage it anymore. So, that's, that's what prompted me to push through.
Yeah, I read where, in the material that we got in our package, that there are problems going back to when the oil ops owned the property.
To the 1980s, that there's been a water problem on that property since the 1980s.
Exactly.
And I was just wondering if you knew that when you purchased it?
I was made aware of a lawsuit that the previous owner had by my neighbors after the fact. I'm not taking that tact, I was taking a tact. I'm an engineer.
Okay.
I'm looking for a solution, and I'm looking to work on it collectively. I'll tell you that the solution that's there right now is not a solution.
I, I, I for one would like to, like to see our township engineer and our roadmaster visit that, that site, his, or his property of BUDS, Horseshoe Trail, see what possible options there are, given the constraints we have within the township's right-of-way. One of the things that just occurred to me that might, might possibly be a solution, and I'm not, not a civil engineer, but there is such a thing as a sheet spread. If we could get the water funneled into something like that to spread it out over maybe 20 feet, instead of directing like a fire hydrant, all of a sudden, now, now it goes horizontal and, you know, spreads out, that's the whole idea. With every solution, there's a downside, and the downside on that is keeping it clean, is isolated. But, but, you know, I think we need to investigate something here in terms of a solution. At the very least, I think we ought to get Gilmore and Nick out there to take a look and see what can be done.
Is that a motion?
That's, yeah, I could make that a motion.
Okay, I will second it.
Any more discussion on?
I don't have a problem with that, not at all. I don't have a problem with that, no. No problem, sir.
I have a motion to?
The motion is that.
Authorize the engineer?
Authorize the engineer.
Authorize our engineer and our roadmaster to, to visit the intersection of 1637 Jones Avenue with, with Horseshoe Trail Road, and see what can be done to alleviate the stormwater fire hydrant situation.
If anything can be done, yeah, we're saying, yeah.
Then the township right-of-way.
And I have a second, any more discussion?
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more old business? We'll move on to new business. The zoning hearing board hearing on June 9th, 2014, regarding applicants seeking a variance in order to construct a 960, or 960-square-foot detached garage 10 feet from the rear of the yard, the property line.
Okay, this is, if you recall, part of our new program to bring everyone to your attention for review, and, you know, your options are to take no action if it requires no vote. If there's a sense of strong opposition, you know, the township can formally oppose it. Generally, the townships don't go in support.
I have no problem.
I have no problem with this either.
You're saying let the zoning board decide?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. No actual part, right.
Hate to tell you, everybody, but that's all the new business, too. Any more new business?
No, sir.
Okay. No, there's no resolutions, or ordinances to be passed, new subdivision lands, any more on two-minute reports? Anything on additional business?
I have something to add for additional business, Fred. This past week, we had someone resign from our planning commission, and our planning commission did interview several people earlier this year, and I would like to make a motion to appoint Chris Shepsko to the planning commission on recommendation from the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Any comments? Here, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
I'm opposed to this one. I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that follows qualifications, so I can't support something I don't know. And I, and unfortunately, I couldn't attend the meeting, the last planning commission meeting, apparently where this might have been discussed.
All the rest.
It was discussed back in February.
It's passed because the rest of the board's passed.
Yeah, they didn't have a planning commission this past month, because there was nothing on the agenda.
Oh, all right. Well.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay. So moved.
I do have one more small thing, if I could comment on additional business.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, and I serve on the board of directors of the Wort Nestrick Museum, and friends of the museum, I wanted to let everyone know that the museum is in the process of purchasing the farm that Wort Nestrick purchased back in 1913 to add this to the national historic site. I'd like to, we are opposed to a 180-foot, what is supposed to be Ham Radio Tower. Our, our, our board voted unanimously to send that message to Tridifferent Township. This is a place where if you take one step one way or another, you don't know whether you're in Tridifferent or Skuggal Townships. And so, as a friend of the township, and as a member of the board of the Wort Nestrick Museum, as a national historic site, I would encourage everyone who would like to, to attend the zoning hearing board meeting, will finally, this is the third time, be able to have public comment in opposition to this.
Barbara, I'm not sure of that. We're still...
No, really?
Yeah, there's been no statement as to when the comment will be permitted. We're still cross-examining their first expert. There are a couple of other experts, and then the neighbors will be presenting their case. There's no guarantee that there will be public comment on the 26th. Just want to make that clear. I don't want to have people sit through four hours, three hours of that, and then get a chance to speak. So, if I learn anything new, I will tell you, but my understanding right now is that it's unlikely that this will be the last hearing.
So it's unlikely that this will be the last one? Oh my God.
Question, though, it has a Tridifferent Solicitor join in yet, I'm going to...
Not yet.
What, what did you say?
Tridifferent Solicitor joined with Bill on this.
Okay.
Answers on that.
Well, it's a work in progress then, huh?
Anything else on additional business? All right, I want to open the meeting, open it to public participation for anything that's not on the agenda. Welcome, limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Wait a minute, what do you mean three minutes? Last month?
Stand up there, please. Did you sign in?
I signed in once.
Fred.
I saw you sign in.
What happened to the thing here? Is that you've got to put your papers on?
A podium?
Yeah, what happened to it?
Over here.
I don't know what happened.
Move it over in the middle. You answer him, I don't want to answer him. He's called me two, two times a day, every day for the last three weeks. So I would get pissed off at him. Okay, my name's James Keller, I live at the Mobile Home Park.
Could you, could you increase the volume, please, of your voice? Thank you.
Where do you increase it at? Over here?
Talk louder. Oh, talk louder, okay, fine, fine.
What do you mean by three minutes? I was here last month, and people went on for five or six, seven minutes. Now you're saying we're going to be confined to three minutes?
Maybe I forgot to say that.
What?
Maybe I forgot to say that, just go on.
You're using up your three minutes, that's go, sir. Please.
Okay. Let me, before I start, I want to have one important question that I want to, all the supervisors and the fire, the fire company and the police force, what is the main responsibility of all you officials? The main responsibility?
To serve the needs of our constituents in a fair, objective way.
Right.
Well, the, the, the health and safety is, is, is important.
That's right. Health and safety, right. Now you've got it right on the nose. Well, let me, let me bring here some serious problems that we have in this park. The first one is propane tanks. They're sitting on small blocks and not on a stable concrete, concrete pad. Some are leaning, we need the EPA to visit the park. The second one, sewer problems are constant. The woman who lives at 8th First Street has a sinkhole in front of her home. Sewer is broken, toilets fill up with sewer water. The third one, 15 buried gas cylinders. At least 10 are in the illegal part of the park. Some may still have gas in them. They must be removed, along with the electrical boxes. All that stuff was supposed to be removed, and they made an agreement between Overstreet and, and the township. It was never removed.
Are you timing?
In the illegal part of the park, when you cross the bridge, this is number four, the first two homes on the left, the first home is filled with trash, hasn't been occupied for months. The man comes once a month to pay the month, to pay the rent. That's the only time, it's not occupied, and it's filled with trash, and the guy who lives next to him, he has to put up with this. He has to put up with this situation. Filled with trash. You couldn't even get in the place, he said. Number five, during the sewer severe winter, a tree split in half in the rear of the homes, between the homes on First Street, number seven and number six. A branch went through the roof on number seven. Another strong windstorm could take the rest of the tree down on homes. Number six, there are homes on Terrace Drive that have no retaining walls, only blocks at the corners of the rear of the homes. They are in danger of collapsing if there's any kind of tremor. They've got blocks sitting on the corners. The home, three quarters of it is on the ground, and the other quarter sticks up in the air, and they've got blocks at each corner. That really makes a lot of sense. Okay, the last one, number seven, the stream that runs through the park is filled with debris. There is a small dam with holes in the bottom to keep the water moving. The holes are not open, they're clogged. The water becomes stagnant, becomes stagnant, and becomes a perfect breeding ground for None of these things has the park done anything about. Let me get, I'll go back to April 15, when we had that sewer leak. And the sewer leak, it wasn't there for a week, or a day, or a week. It was there for at least a couple of months, and I've got residents that'll verify. And why didn't the police see it? They're supposed to tour around the park. Why didn't the code enforcement drive around it? The roads are right back there where the leak was. You could see the green on the road. Where was the...
Sir, you mentioned a sinkhole with a sewer problem. Is this the same problem, or is this a different one?
No, this was a sewer leak on April 15th, which I...
Not a location, not a location.
Yeah, it was at the back of the park.
The only comment I'd have, before you continue on, it seems to me that these are more landlord problems than they are township problems.
You just said that the townships are interested in the health and safety of the...
They are, but...
Aren't we residents of this township?
Yes, you are, but it has, it has to do with, it has to do with the landlord's and his...
No, you're not going to dump that on me, because it's, don't wait for the landlords because the landlord ain't gone, they haven't done nothing for years. That's why we're in this situation. Anyways...
Have we sent yurkeys out there?
Yes.
Have we fined the landlord?
No.
Has, has yurkeys...
The park is regulated by the Chester County Health Department.
Okay.
So...
Should we call Chester County Health Department?
Chester County Health Department called us and called the landlord.
Okay.
And what's the status?
Chester County Health Department, I'm not sure if they're going to be out there to take a look at it, so...
Well, the leak was still...
We're doing as much as we can do.
Right, and, and the landlord did fix that, that sewer leak. Yes.
Good.
Okay, what I'm saying is that leak was there for a couple of months. Where were the police patrols? They would have seen it. Where's the code enforcement guy? He's never been in this park but once. When, when were these people hired, these, what's the name of the company?
The code enforcement officer does not go into these places on a regular basis unless called to do so. There is, they don't travel around the township looking.
I have called him up 50 times. He doesn't even answer his phone, any message. I told him the things that's going on in this park, he doesn't even show up. Half, one half hour, he showed up on May 6th. May 6th, he showed up after the leak, on April 14th, May 6th. He came for a half hour, I said, I can't stay more than a half an hour, I got a leak. I told him about the, the tanks, the buried tanks. I, I, I told him about the homes on, on, on the Terrace Drive, I told him about the cat problem. Finally, we're getting the prop, cat problem resolved, thanks to this neighbor and the park, getting some cooperation from the park. They've been catching the cats and getting them out of the park.
If I could interrupt you, sir. Our, our question here, this gentleman raised about a question relative to our code enforcement policy, if you will. On our website, we have our code enforcement officer listed, and I believe a telephone number, correct. The implication is, is that residents can get on the website and call our code enforcement officer. But I think in practice, we would prefer that the residents contact the township first.
They need to contact the township, and then we do contact the enforcement officer.
Yeah, and, and the reason for that, if I could extrapolate, is we could easily run up big financial bills if, if every other resident was calling code enforcement, and they actually responded, we'd go after all kinds of various things.
I'm the only resident that I know has called them. And we, I sent you a certified letter before the May meeting with listing all the things that are going wrong in the park. I've never heard any, I haven't seen any action taken by the township whatsoever, nothing. And yet they can say, you stay there, stay there and say, you're concerned about the health and welfare of these residents. Don't give me that line, because it's not true. It's not true. Anyway, like I said, there was, if there would have been a police patrol around the park, they would have seen the leak, the code enforcement went around, he would have seen the leak. But nobody comes into that park. The only time we get police is when there's a complaint, and the police have to come in and, and try to straighten things out. That's the only time we get to see the police.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us.
All right, wait a minute, I've got one more, one more thing, one more thing. This township has a, no open fires, right? No open fires? Okay. Three times in a row, I have to call the police about open fire. The first one was about three or four feet high. It was five and nine, in the dark, you could see it.
This was a fire not in, not in a 55 gallon...
No, it was behind a home on Pot House Road.
Not controlled, not in, not in a 55 gallon drum or anything?
No, no, no. This was behind a home on Pot House Road, right across from the park, and there's a woods in between, okay? Well, anyway, I called him at five and nine, police officer showed up at 20 after nine. He didn't even have the courtesy to stop and ask me anything. I had to wait on, he drove past, and a minute later, he called him on the phone. And I said, well, it's too late, the fire, the fire's out. So then, about a week later, there's another fire. This one ain't as high. But the policeman, I called in, the policeman comes, and he, first he gives me a line that, this is private property, I can't go over there. I said, what do you mean? I says, that they're, they're doing something that's against the township rules. What do you mean you can't go over there? So he said he went over. He went over. I don't know if he did or not. The third time, I called the police for another fire. This guy, he's fascinated with fires. He's fascinated with fires. I called the third time, and then know what the, know what the police, the policeman told me? That he has permission from the assistant fire chief of Valley Forge Fire Company. He has permission to have an open fire. And I went over, the second time, the guy said, the policeman said he has a grill. Well, I walked over there Friday, there was another fire, there is no grill there, there's nothing there. It was an open fire again. I even talked to the gentleman, I told him, I says, we got a woods here. I said, if this woods catches fire, I said, some of those homes could burn up. Well, he's guaranteed that. And he's, not only that, he says he has a paper, a paper giving him permission to have a fire. And like I tell him, he has a fascination with fires. He's got fires three or four times a week. And one of these days, and it gets dry in the summer, that woods, and it's just full, all kind of fueled for that...
We're talking about a resident on, on West Pot House Road.
Pot House Road, yes.
East Pot House.
And I'll tell you this, if there ever's a fire, and then somebody's, get, home gets damaged, the township's going to be liable, because you are aware of this situ, situation.
Okay, we've heard of it.
Now we got assistant fire chief giving permission for open fires.
Thank you again for sharing your thoughts, sir.
You're welcome. I'll be back next month. I hope for some action on these, on this situation.
Fred, I just want a minute, if I could get it. We had to come down, and we did get the cat problem solved.
Not completely.
Just very nice. Thirty-seven of them went, thirty-seven of them went out.
Wow.
And a lot of babies and everything like that, I mean. He is right. Ma'am, Martha, you said it was private property there, right? It's private property. And what, what does that mean? Is, that's all I wanted to ask you, because you said it last month, and I...
A police officer can't go onto private property?
Private.
And that's not true. The chief said last month, he told you that, we can go, we can go into the...
I, I just wanted to...
Okay, you asked me, you asked me, what does private property mean?
Yeah, what does private property mean?
Private property means, you know, with that, people can't go onto someone's private property without...
My teacher's down here to tell you about what's going on.
Calm down.
Sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. The two homes on the corner up here is Pot House Road, under, they're great, it's an animal trap, is what it is over there, with all the weeds and everything around it.
1423, 1425.
They should be taken down, they should be cleaned up on the corner and stuff like that. Seems like, pretty neat how everything's, there's so much shrubbery around, I didn't even know, oh, oh, it's right there. If you run by, just, just, we noticed it, and, and the propane volleys right there, and trimming the trees and trying to keep the place look nice is what everybody really wants. I, I've been there six years, and nobody ever did nothing until I came down here. So we stepped, last, that meeting, I stepped in there, I saw a lot of accidents happening.
Okay.
That's the only reason, Fred, I wanted to stop.
I appreciate it very much. Can we...
Sure, move on.
Jim, let's move on, shall we?
Right, right, I'm not, I'm ready to move on. We got some more questions.
I think we ought to move on, but I think we ought to take a look at it, see landlords...
You said that was 1423, 1425 Pot House Road?
And their home, owned by a park owner.
Thank you, sir, for your courtesy and waiting.
Absolutely. Go ahead. I have two matters that I wanted to talk about tonight, or address, both of which were on the initial agenda. That was on Monday morning, that was then stripped out of the agenda. So, you know, part of what I want to know is, you know, why they were removed. Their first relates...
Excuse me, sir, your name is?
I'm sorry, excuse me. It's Ed Hall, at Picketo Slade. The first relates to the definition of developable area and lot area. It was one of the matters that was on the initial agenda. And over the, since September of last year, I was in the process of trying to get a swimming pool. I also followed up with a variance to try to get some decking around my pool. Throughout that process, I was told multiple times by multiple reps...
Excuse me for a minute. Is there someone back there taking pictures and has a camera back there, taking pictures of the meeting?
Nobody with a camera. I don't need a camera.
No, I know that.
Jim, hi.
I'm sorry to answer.
Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you.
And I'll, I'll try to go through each of these quickly.
No, fine, go ahead.
So throughout the course of, since September, my pool permit was ultimately given in November. I had a variance meeting, meeting that went into multiple ones.
Yeah, you do.
For a long period of time, I was told by numerous or several township reps that the easement on my property did not have to be backed out of my developable lot. I was told that by Frank Newhams, the head engineer... I was told that by Frank Newhams, the head engineer. I also had conversations with Kim Yocan Garcia. Uh, those same representations were made to my pool company, as well as my surveyor. Multiple people that was made to. Uh, my pool project started. Uh, I had significant work into the pool project. Uh, I was then called March twenty-seventh, months after my, my pool permit was given, and was told, Frank Newhams called me and says that we made a mistake. Uh, easements, easements have to be backed out. I'm really sorry. We made a mistake. We've been making this mistake for many years. This is not, this is not, this is something that's been done for many, many years, dating back possibly over a decade. I just like to make a note that as part of my pool being approved, the township did the calculation for impervious coverage, which was, and they said it was fine, was under thirty percent. In order for it to be under thirty percent, they had to say the easements were fine. So they were, from, based upon my, the representations they made, the calculation they gave me on my pool, the easements did not have to be backed out. As part of what Frank also said to me, Frank Newhams, was that part of the reason it was being implemented that way was because it only made sense. He said, at the end of the day, my job is to enforce the ordinances, uh, which he will do. He's like, but, we've been doing it for years, because your ground that has a easement on it, has grass on top of it, has grass on top of it, has grass left of it, grass to the right of it, and it's pervious. So it wouldn't make any sense for us to back it out of an impervious coverage calculation, since the land is pervious. It's, which is why, his explanation to me as to why the township had been doing it that way for several years. Um, you know, as part of that, I'd like to mention that this property is something that I pay taxes on. I've always paid taxes on. It was represented to me when I bought it, and when the township approved, the, the plan back in the late nineties, uh, that the easements were part of the property, part of the developable property. Uh, I don't remember, there's many lots in our development that are a third of an acre. There's thirty lots that had, approximately thirty lots that had easements. If you back out three thousand square feet of easements from a third of an acre, and you take the same assumptions that I have, or similar house size, it's very difficult to get enough, a house that's conforming. You take in driveway, you take in the sidewalk, you have a non-conforming lot. Those lots were not approved as non-conforming, and those lots were not sold as non-conforming. So if somebody's gonna tell me that the township has been doing it this way for years and years, I think a lot of, a lot of, a lot of records need to be checked, including every easement or every permit that's been done since the last ten, fifteen, seventeen years. Because my neighbor, two houses down from me, has a lot significantly smaller than mine, has a driveway that was expanded, has a big shed in his backyard, has a pool, has decking around his pool, has a three thousand foot easement, and he didn't have to get a variance. So if somebody's gonna tell me that this has been enforced this way for the last fifteen, seventeen years, I'm not seeing it. So my question here, my first question, is that if the easement does in fact need to be netted out, and I think the ordinance should be changed to the way the township has been implementing it for the last fifteen, seventeen years, be consistent. I feel like I'm being the first, I'm being the sacrificial lamb that's being made an example of, even after, you know, frankly, I probably am a pain to the township, because I've called them repeatedly, because I wanted to make sure that I did things on the up and up. I had a problem with my last project, and the township, all, Yerkey signed off on the project before they should have, and resulted in well over a year, almost fifteen thousand dollars of my money to litigate it. Fortunately, Yerkey stood behind it. They testified for me at court, which was great, and I ultimately got my money back. The point being is that I wanted to make sure that I was doing everything properly, multiple communications to make sure I was. And then, months after I get a pool permit, they tell me that, well, we might have to pull your per permit even though it's starting. And by the way, I know your variance hearing is in the middle, and that we told you that it only, you don't have to back it out. And then my variance hearing goes haywire. So that's the first question. The second question relates to the variance hearing. And-
Try to summarize it up.
Okay, I'll try to summarize it up. And, you know, I'll, I'll try to be gentle on the way that I present this part of it. I went to the variance, based upon the representation that here's the amount of impervious coverage you have. I knew that I was gonna be a little bit over. My first approximation was thirty-two percent, which in many cases, many people say that's de minimis. Um, as it turns out, with the change in the way the township looked at this, now I'm at thirty-eight percent. So in the middle of my variance hearing, in a continuance, where another lawyer from my neighbor tells the township that, hey, you're doing this wrong. You need to back out the easements. So I have a, a neighbor's lawyer telling the zoning hearing board how it's supposed to be calculated, which is, which is directly different than what I was told by the township. To make matters worse, and you know, on my second hearing, things were becoming chaotic, because the zoning hearing board's confused as to what number am I supposed to be looking at. She's saying this, oh, is it two percent? Is it eight percent? The percentage is different. Oh, what's going on here? It turns into chaos an hour and a half later. During that meeting, and with all due respect, you know, I looked at all the board supervisors' meetings. I saw no indication from you all that you were looking to oppose my, my pool project or my variance. Nothing. Fifty Lafayette Drive has an easement close to sixty percent. You guys didn't oppose it. I read in the board, board minutes. I sit, my, my meeting, Lafayette Hill goes by, and Mr. Brennan's there and makes no comments. And with all due respect, I know Bill's a very, Mr. Brennan's very respected. My topic comes up, and Bill starts saying that the halls may have acted in bad faith. The halls pool probably, probably shouldn't even have started, or maybe shouldn't have started. And I had no idea why, where this was coming from. The day after the, the, the second meeting, after Mr. Brennan had made several comments, acting as if, you know, he's there as a citizen, although I'm not sure where he got his information, I mean, my guess is he got it as his role as solicitor, not as a citizen. He makes comments that are negatively directed towards me and my family. The day after, he sends-
I'm not object to that. That's totally outrageous and wrong. You've got a zoning case. You lost your case. You have a right to take an appeal. You have a right to go to court. This all started, let me finish. This all started because you applied for a permit for a pool, which was issued to you in error. Nobody knew about it. When we finally learned that the permit was issued in error, I spoke with Newhams, who spoke to you, and I said, the township has a right to revoke permits issued in error, unless there has been significant work that has been undertaken in connection with the application. We didn't know when you did your work, when you started your work, when you paid, just a moment. We didn't know that. So I sent you a letter, and I said, we've just learned that there is an issue about whether your pool permit was issued. We're looking into it. Immediately after that, some work was done. So we gave you the benefit of the doubt. The permit has not been revoked. And I told your lawyer that the township would probably not revoke it, even though a case could be made, in my opinion, that your actions with your pool, uh, company were based upon your recognition that the permit might be revoked, because it was issued incorrectly. So, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and listen to you say, make those types of comments about my participation when the permit was issued in error, and my job as the township solicitor is to protect this township in connection with legal matters, and I did not appear at that, uh, meeting on behalf of the township. I appeared as a citizen, because I was concerned that the, that the township supervisors were being possibly misled in terms of what you knew and when you acted. So your lawyer presented information with the dates when the work was done, the dates when the payments were made to the pool company. So I wrote back to him, and I said, based on the information that's been provided, I don't think the permit was issued, uh, in, in, under circumstances where you acted improperly. And I suggested that the board would probably take no action, and they haven't. So I'm not gonna sit here and-
You skipped a few steps that I'd like to clarify for-
Well, you can clarify, but I'm saying to you, you have your zoning case. You had your day in court. You can appeal it. If you're not happy, appeal it. Take it to court.
But you came there, when Bill came to talk-
Just a moment. The township has not participated in your case. Nothing's been done by the township. So, you know, if you have your appeal rights, you take your appeal. You do whatever you want. Okay?
Um, I'd like to ask Bill's participation, whether he filed for Freedom of Information Act to get information to support his comments at my hearing, or whether he, not he used the information that he has as a solicitor to come and make comments. When he first started talking, he stood up and said, I'm Bill Brennan, and the court reporter even said, no, no, you don't, you don't have to introduce yourself. We all know who you are, Bill. So it's not real easy to differentiate as a citizen versus, versus, I mean, she said, you don't have to tell us who you are. We all know you, Bill. And then-
But he didn't say, I'm representing the township.
He didn't say that, correct.
Okay.
But the parts that he skipped was that Frank Newhams called me on Thursday. I got a letter from, from, from Bill on Friday. Frank said, Ed, show me that you acted in good faith. I said, I did. I'd be happy to. Come to my house, look at all the work done. He says, all right, come there on Monday. Comes here on Monday. I give him the evidence. He says, this is, this is clear cut to me. It's fine. You're good to go. The same day, the township comes. They, they do another inspection. They pass the inspection. They say, good, proceed. I hear nothing from the township for a week. I call Kim, said, hey, Kim, just making sure that everything's good to go. She says, yeah, you're fine. You know, Bill, Bill sent the email, sent the letter to you before we got the information, which was confusing to me, with, with all due respect. They both told me everything was fine. They had the information. You still come to the case the day after, Bill, then asked my, the day after he made the comments at the hearing, he then go, he then sends a letter to my lawyer asking for the evidence. The day that I gave him essentially the same evidence I gave Frank Newham, Newhams, he says, oh, yeah, you're right. I don't think there's, there's an issue. But the problem was, for me, the damage was done. I mean, he came there as a citizen, but he's a well-respected, rightfully so person, that-
What damage was done? I, I don't understand what you're saying. You have the zoning case, you presented your case.
You said that the halls-
So you watched your case, you made a-
I didn't lose my, you helped me lose my case.
Look, it, there's a record, and what was said was said. I'm comfortable with what was said. That's fine.
Will also testify as to what was said.
Well, fine, there's a record. Fine.
Well, the record doesn't say everything, because the record also says that my neighbor was there and she wasn't.
Okay, what's your point?
The point was that I think that the zoning hearing board decision was tainted. It was tainted by the fact that the township gave me bad, multiple township representatives gave me bad information repeatedly, and the solicitor for the board of supervisors came there, said that my family was acting out of bad faith.
That's, that's not true.
It is true.
Let's read, let's read the record.
Well, there's multiple people that will say, Bill. Okay? Acting out of bad faith, and the whole pool project shouldn't have started. Okay? And that's, to me, I paid my taxes. My wife and I are good citizens. I've never done anything wrong. God, I'm a boring person. I've never even smoked pot in my life. And then I, I got this guy coming here, and I'm sorry, I just don't, I just don't understand it. So those are my two issues.
I've got a question here on your, on this application. Was our engineer involved in this at any point? Township engineer?
I don't think so.
No, but in the beginning, when this house was built, a plan was prepared indicating total lot area of nineteen thousand, unrestricted lot area, removing the three thousand square foot, uh, from the easement area. So when the house was built, I don't know whether it was built for him or not, it was built based upon a reduction in the record.
It seems to me that the heart of this issue is how is impervious computed, right? Then in my understanding, maybe rightly or wrongly, that it's based on total lot area.
Yep.
It's not for our ordinances, though.
We need to change the ordinance.
The only way would be to change the ordinance, son.
And to have impervious easements included in the development lots.
That would be opening a Pandora's box to do that.
I think so. I think it's just changing, putting one word in.
But can we support his appeal? He's allowed to build his pool, but no apron, right?
Yes, correct. No decking around my pool.
And that seems ludicrous, in terms of all you've been through.
And, you know, part of this, what I said to him, which I don't understand, to the zoning hearing board, was that, based upon, once again, all the calls I put in to Kim and Frank and God bless them-
You're trying to do the right thing.
I said, I said, okay, well, Frank, you said to me, he said, do you realize that if you get this variance, you're gonna have to do stormwater management? He's like, you know, and what's this gonna cost you? And I said, that's fine. I'm fine with doing the right thing. Give me the variance, and I'll do the stormwater management. You know, my estimate is it's gonna cost me ten thousand dollars of money that I get nothing out of, other than stormwater management, and I said that to the zoning hearing board.
Do I hear anything from my colleagues? Do-
Well, I, I feel sorry for the gentleman with regard to the, the zoning hearing board decision. You've already built the pool, and the township literally gave you permission to build it, right?
And, and the numbers that we gave him, the numbers that he received back from the township were, and he knew that he had to go get the variance for the decade.
Right.
Is thirty-one point eight or thirty-two percent, and our impervious coverage says thirty percent.
Thirty-two percent.
Yeah, his was thirty-two. In my mindset, what is really two percent?
Nothing.
It's easy. Should have been done. It should have been a, a slam dunk type. And now, that's his only hammer. We don't make the rules. They make the rules.
I know.
And, and the kicker is now, if you even change it, and you take that easement out, his pool should have never been given a permit.
That's correct.
And that's our mistake. And I'm saying that, as a township, that's our mistake. And, and that mistake is not being reversed. There's been no, no permit, which would normally have been the, uh, the authorized course of action if he had not spent any money or taken any action to build the pool, because whether the code enforcement officer enforces it or not, it's in the ordinance. The ordinance says you take out three, you know, the, the easement area for the utilities, and that's a common feature in township ordinances. All right, so it was missed, and the applicant had, uh, spent some money and done some work, fine. So the permit will not be revoked. However, the zoning hearing board heard an issue for whether there should be additional coverage necessary for the walkways or whatever it was, and they denied it. So that's not a matter the township was involved in. Township took no action. And, um, you know, my comments at the zoning hearing had nothing to do with the walkway. They were only whether the township was being deceived in connection with the permit issued in error, as to whether the applicant realized there was a problem in that regard, and then contacted the pool company to have them, you know, do work quickly, so that the estoppel issue could be, uh, you know, protected in, in his regard.
Okay, there's, there's another question I have on this, which, you, you wanna have an apron around your pool, basically. And you're, you're saying that you wanna have a decking kind of apron?
Yeah, there was, there's a couple of components. The one was decking around the pool.
Right.
Another was, we have a pretty big hill. So my, I have four kids, and my kids range from eight to fourteen, and they have friends over all the time. And I wanted to make sure that the kids don't slip on the grass, so I wanted to have some steps. The, the part that may be considered a little bit more, you know, extra, was we had a small area. We wanted to put a little fire pit, just because my little girls like to have fires. So that, that's probably a little, you know, maybe there's an extra hundred.
The point I'm trying to, trying to get at, as opposed to these sort of little extra things, um, is my understanding of most decking is there's gaps between the boards, right? And the idea, and the idea of, uh, impervious is it blocks water altogether. Decking with gaps between the boards really doesn't block water. The water runs its way through those cracks down into the ground. So it raises, it raises the question as to whether decking is impervious or not.
Well, frankly, um, my, my pool contractor contacted the township, once again, trying to make sure things are done right, and they said, there's even these impervious, or, excuse me, pervious decking, that a lot of townships will count as fifty percent coverage. But they said that the position for our township was that's, that's not acceptable.
Really? You said that to you?
Um, my pool company spoke with either Kim or Frank, and one, on several matters, but that matter was, hey, some townships say that this is, this is pervious, so this is, this is a great alternative. Let's make this happen.
Right.
And they said, they said, sorry, it's counted as a hundred percent.
It's not new ordinance.
It's not new ordinance. Yeah, exactly. It's not new ordinance.
We have nothing about the pervious being counted, using a different calculation.
He, he's been led in-
Barbara, not necessarily. This is active litigation, and there's a record, and he has a right to take his appeal. I don't even know if he's done so. The township's not involved in his case. Township has never taken a position in his case. And if he wins, fine. If he loses, fine. But that, that's on a separate track, and we shouldn't be commenting on a matter that's in litigation.
Okay.
But, but it's not in litigation, my question is whether it should be-
Opposed by the neighbor, by the way, which he was not here to speak about his, uh-
Okay.
Bill, Bill, it's not, it's, at the moment, as I understand, you haven't filed the lawsuit.
Not yet. I wanted to see what happened here tonight, and then that's, that's it.
So it's really not, if litigation, if there was any, it's in front of the sun, we're going to act, not done.
Is the decision filed?
No, I, I don't learn.
Thirty days, thirty days after run, right? Thirty days run, yeah?
Till next week.
All right, so he can file, he can appeal through- All right, so he can file, uh, he can appeal through next week, so the case is not finished, it's still active. He has a right to appeal.
But the, the, the question I'm presenting to you is based upon the information, i- is whether or not the board of supervisors would appeal as it was stated on, initially on the agenda.
Appeal what?
Appeal the decision.
The supervisors aren't, aren't participating in your case.
I think what he's saying is, given the circumstances that led to his putting in the pool, hypothesizing that he had permission, and, and now he can't get to the pool in a safe way, based on that decision, your request was for us to join you in appealing the decision. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's what he's saying.
Barbara, the point of it is that under the ordinance, the pool itself should not have been permitted. So, you know, you're, 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 whether the ordinance was good, bad, or indifferent, but the, uh, the granting of the pool permit in one, uh, you know, in, in, in one sense, uh, allowed him to build a pool he wasn't entitled in the first place. So, you know, you're gonna make a bad situation worse. It's up to you, whatever you want.
Worse, but the same night, there was fifty-seven percent of coverage, and there was no comments made that night, so I'm not sure how this is, a bad situation becomes worse.
Well, the bad situation is that the original pool should've been denied.
But that wasn't my fault.
Well, I know that, but the permit was issued incorrectly. So you got the advantage of, uh, having a pool built when it should've been denied based upon the existing ordinances, whether they're correct or incorrect. So now, uh, having the pool, you wanted, uh, you know, additional relief from the board, and they turned you down. So they did what they did, and you have a right to appeal through next week. Do whatever you want.
Yeah, and I'm asking the, the, the board to do the, to, to my decision, do the right thing. And given the two factors I mentioned, one of which, uh, Mr. Brennan coming and making derogatory comments about-
I made no derogatory comments.
You even said that earlier.
Let's pull the record out and see what was said. I made no derogatory comments about you or your family.
You, you made a comment earlier tonight about your comments. You just, you did it five minutes ago.
Well, this is on the record too. I'll stand by anything I've said.
Okay, you said it five minutes ago.
You started all this with the, you know, the Mr. Brennan job. I have a right to be there, I'm a citizen. I have a right to sit in hearings and listen, and I have a right to protect this board, which is my job.
Well, did you have a right to say anything? You were there as a resident.
Yeah, why did you-
You had a right to say anything at all.
Why didn't you say anything?
As a resident.
A right to talk. Anyone who goes to a zoning hearing has a right to talk.
Oh, they did.
Yeah.
Why didn't?
Any more, Mr. Collins?
Come on, we're done. Wait, we can't, we can't, we can't do anything more. He has to go to the county. That's the next step. Am I correct?
He'd have to appeal.
I, I, I don't know, I don't understand what, what-
If he can't get the, uh, the apron, he can just turn around and sue the township, right?
Go ahead, let him sue the township.
I mean, wouldn't that be appropriate?
But he had, but he can go to the county to appeal the zoning hearing board, but I don't understand what, what-
But it gets denied, and he just turns around and, and sues the township. Why wouldn't the township back him up?
Back him up?
They, they made the board.
Like I said, I, I went into the variance based upon the representations that multiple township people gave me. That's why I went to, I mean, I knew it was a little bit over, but they changed the rules in the middle of it.
Will, would they, they appeal it? Where do they, does he have to appeal it through?
They need to appeal it to a Chester County Court.
And that's the way I'm, I'm reading. I have these on my property, you know, so does this mean if I were to improve my property that, am I gonna get a permit and then a month later find out, oop, sorry? But hey, don't worry about it. Remember, you go fight it, you know? And then, Mr. Brennan, I, I will say that, when you say to Ed, "Every citizen has a right to speak," you know, so, and, and I think it's a little, um, unprofessional, for lack of better word, where you could be scolding him. He's a grown man as well. I think he has a right to present his case. You certainly have a right to come back to him, but I think you're talking to him in a very, um, very condescending way.
I don't think so. I think the record is, is on, everything is on the camera, and that's all fine. He started with the personal attack, uh, and I responded, and I'm satisfied with my response. Thank you.
Well, not so.
I'm, I'm still confused as to what-
I'm asking for two things. One is that the board of supervisors look at the rule the way it stands now, and to, to, to make a change so that it's implemented the way it's been implemented for, since the late nineties, from what I understand.
That makes sense.
I agree with you, uh, on this. I, I think what's needed, what's, what's needed, Fred, is, is for somebody, and I'll volunteer to do this, uh, is review this. Review this, this, uh, in his case, against our ordinances, against what Yurkies has been doing, and what Sartor has been, been, uh, involved with, our township engineer. Uh, just, just, just to see what the solution is for the township as a whole, for starters, whether we need to modify our ordinance or not.
The, the problem is, Jim, I, I agree with you, by the way. However, uh, we have only got a week to make the appeal, so that's gotta be done right away.
Yeah, yeah, but, but-
Well, it's two different issues.
In my mind, I, in my mind right now, I don't have a clear, uh, despite what you all have said about the easements subtracting from the, the lot area to get the developable area, to then calculate the impervious. You know, I, I, that's not been my understanding.
Again, my point is maybe written there, but that's not the way.
But this was done, this, this is when the house was built. Which house?
This house.
This house.
I know that's what I understand.
All right.
Well, I respect the fact that you're in a difficult situation. But I must say, that with all due respect, I've known Mr. Brennan for a long time, and he is always, always, always respectful, and honest, and objective. And so, I say to you that if there was a mistake made in any way, shape, or form, let's describe it to the right person in the right place. And whether that was Mrs. Yokum, or whether it was, um, Frank Newhams, it, it's, forgive the pun, the water's under the bridge at this point, or if not. Okay? It's on the surface, and you're drowning in all this regulatory stuff. So the question is, how can we objectively, as a township, deal with a situation that is extraordinarily difficult? You have a pool, you're trying to get an apron. I would suggest that you bring your appeal to the appropriate folks within the timeframe that is allotted, and then, who knows what other private people might support you at that meeting.
But it would be advantageous to him if Jim would go over the material and check it out, and enable the, if necessary, have-
There, there's, there's serious step, in my mind, there's serious definitional questions here.
Yep.
Okay? And we need to get it resolved, not only, not only for his information, but for, for our own information.
With township policy.
Generally.
Yes.
Generally.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so.
For all the property owners.
So I, I will look into it, is all I can say.
But I would encourage you to still go to the county and, and initiate-
Initiate the proceeding. You don't, we don't want you to lose out when you're appeal time.
I'm personally opposed to suing the township, so to speak. I really didn't wanna go that route, because, you know, I'm trying to get my pool finalized, I don't, you know, I don't want, I'm, I'm not gonna piss anybody off. And unfortunately, I'm, I'm very sorry, Bill, I, my intention was not to piss you off. I, I was not trying to insult you.
I know.
My perspective was, I gave Frank Newham the same exact information two weeks earlier. And, and when I interviewed you, it took you less than a day to conclude, there's not a problem. And then you appeared at the, at the meeting, two weeks after I gave Frank the information, which I just didn't understand as a, I just-
Just a minute. I didn't have any of that information at the hearing.
Frank said he was giving it.
I, I didn't get any information from Frank, and at the hearing, I needed to know whether my township, uh, was being taken advantage of in terms of the permit issued in error. That was it. That's on the record, and I'll stand by it.
Right, and to be very, very transparent, um, there are some of us, and I in particular, as a supervisor, who have had instances where Mr. Newhams has not performed his task as he should.
And I just, you know, for what it's worth, last time, I'm really sorry, is-
I would suggest that, uh, Mr. Morrison, uh, board supervisor, and Mr. Hall, uh, put their heads together and, uh, check.
I, I will, I will look into this and communicate with Mr. Hall.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
All right.
And then if, if necessary, we'll take action from there, even if it means an extra meeting, if we have to do that, to support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Long time no see.
Where you been?
You all look the same.
You've got a great hand.
On the concern of some of the residents of Pickering Glen, has anyone on the board seen the preliminary, uh, drawings for the, the new school and the fields that are gonna be built over there on the-
What are you, what are you talking about?
Um, there are plans, preliminary plans.
We can't talk about it because-
Nothing at all.
We can't, nothing can be said.
All right.
The judge has made no decision. We are not in collusion. We know nothing about it. Nothing at all.
Um, will they possibly have a meeting with you, or before anything is-
Without a question, once a decision is made, everything will be taken care of.
Okay.
Then I would come back if I were you.
All right. Just based on some of the concerns of some of the residents that have, you know, come to me and have looked at the plans, I went over and took a look at them myself, and, uh-
Where are they?
Army?
Where are the plans?
The, uh, administration building.
Okay.
There's a big, big placard there. And I noticed that one of the roads actually comes out right at the entrance of Pickering Glen, and it goes right back to the school, so unless there's something that's gonna be developed where they can't use that road, it, it's gonna be a mess. And I'm just here to express that.
It's premature. It really is.
Okay.
And I personally would say, and I think, I think for all of us, we cannot legally, nor should we, look at anything that is not presented to us at the appropriate time by the school district. Okay? We have to be totally objective-
We'll, we'll be in contact with you.
And after the fact of the court's making its decision.
And, and as you probably-
Please respect that, okay?
No, I understand that, but, um-
I know you understand it, but do you respect it?
I do respect it.
Thank you.
And I, that's why I'm here, because I respect all of you. And I just wanna be upfront, and I just would like to find out when they have these meetings, because it's never publicized. I mean, I found out through a neighbor that they have these drawings already, and, you know, you have eminent domain that they're taking the property, and I don't wanna get involved in that, but-
We don't know a single thing.
Next thing you know, they come out and, and then they're, they're building, so I just wanna be upfront about it, because, you know, you know, we have some concerns, so.
You're gonna need to keep your eye on our website as to when they come to the planning commission, whether it's formal or submittal. And then you can, you know, and it's gonna have to go through, I'm sure, the list of you about.
And keep, keep, keep in mind that, that one of the major players in this is, is outside the township, it's PennDOT. PennDOT has, has to issue a highway occupancy permit for this particular-
There's an awful lot to go into.
They're, it's a long way from becoming a reality.
We, we meet with them once a month.
Don't lose sleep, you're premature.
Okay, but, you know, time flies. You know? I, I haven't seen you guys in a couple years.
That's right, you haven't.
Thanks, Pete.
Is there any more public participation in anything? Yes, sir. Did you sign in?
No, I haven't. My name is Vivek Kivale, and I live on Twenty-Nine Pot House Road. I've been there since over six years now.
Could you speak up just a little?
All right. Uh, my name is Vivek Kivale, and I live on Pot House Road. And, uh, right across from our house is an open, uh, space, uh, which belongs to, I believe, the Levin Brothers. And I've written a letter to, uh, Jim, and he responded, and, uh, Mary wrote back to the Levin Brothers to do something about the weeds. And, um, every year we have this problem, though. It's a seed, when they bloom, they just come straight to our yard, and my daughter has asthma, and that's the plant that appears up really bad. And I've approached the township numerous times, but nothing has been done. So I'm requesting you, what can the township do about it, rather than, uh, taking action with, uh, Levin Brothers?
Um, with the letter that, uh, which you sent to Mr. Kivale, uh, and I got a copy of, did everybody else get a copy?
All the bits.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Very well-written, Mary. Thank you.
Uh, the, 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 the theme of the letter is that, that this kind of a situation where you've got noxious weeds in a, on a property, uh, doesn't get size-specific apparently, uh, falls under a Pennsylvania statute that is managed by the Department of Agriculture, and they can, uh, cite a landowner for, um, violation of the noxious weed ordinance, or noxious weed statute, I guess, ordinance. Um, so the, but the question here is, um, do, do, does a township, um, wanna get involved in, in helping these neighbors to basically push this into, basically, the Department of Agriculture territory, to get them in there, to do a cursory inspection so that, uh, the statute can be enforced? So, um, it, it's one thing for one individual citizen to write to the Department of Agriculture, it's another thing for the township to send a letter on behalf of, not just this, this resident, but, um, other residents that you may be familiar with that have similar problems. So, um, I guess, I guess I'm inclined to, to, to get, uh, to give these folks some support with, with a letter alerting the Department of Agriculture that there is this problem.
They were copied on a letter that went to the Levin's.
Okay, all right.
The Department of Agriculture was? Okay.
There, it's all here in, in what was in her packets.
I read the letter, I'll be honest, I didn't see it with DC.
No, it's, this, this is in the packet that Mary included with the letter.
And all of that was included to the Department of Agriculture.
So we, Mary sent the letter to Levin's on June second, knowing that today is, okay, I can't remember, third, fourth?
Two days ago.
Two days ago? So we're still waiting for a response from them. And, I mean, knowing that, I mean, I have seen, my, my son is asthmatic and has issues too, and if this is causing a major thing, and, and it, it is an noxious weed, and it is a Canadian thistle, whatever it is, it's still required to get it down, and, and-
And by, by the way, I, just as a little fine point, I mean, is in, in the, in the statute, uh, I couldn't help but notice that the noxious weeds are not limited to that list.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, there's, if another weed is viewed to be invasive nuisance, possibly noxious, that can, that can count also. I'm not thinking particularly of, uh, butt butterfly weeds, uh, in growth, it's, uh, seems to be prevalent around the area, particularly Valley Forge Park, as a matter of fact.
Yes.
This may take a long time for them to respond, but in the meantime, what can the township do for us in, in order to get rid of some of the weeds, which grows along the, the side of the road?
The, the situation is, is, is Mr. McCurry still here?
Pete just left.
Okay. Well, what the situation is, is we've got a, a Pickering Glen development, uh, and the Levens, which are ostensibly part of that development. Yes, I, we, we know that.
Yes, we have.
We, we know that. And, we, they're, all, all of these, these properties are right adjacent to a, to a state road, Pot House Road, it's not a township road, and therefore, we, I don't believe can.
There's not much we can do.
Can't take action within a state road right away. Uh, we, we can request possibly PennDOT to come in with a mower.
We can request PennDOT to come in with a mower, they won't move their right of way.
Right, right.
Which is not gonna be a, it's not gonna be a very wide swath.
Yeah, and it's, that's a fraction of the area that has the weeds, so.
The bottom line is, there is legislation that is supportive, and getting, and maybe the bottom line is, if the, if the Levens do not do what they're supposed to by virtue of Pennsylvania law, then is there a, a, a fine that can be issued if they do not clear the weeds on their property two times a year?
There, there, there're penalty provisions in the statute.
Okay.
Do we have a height requirement for grass?
We do not.
Anywhere else?
We have no weed ordinance, nor do we have a property maintenance ordinance.
Well, but the height, the height requirement.
Can these ordinance be enforced, I mean, I just say, I know, it takes a while.
It doesn't have one, they rely on the state ordinance that, that was set.
So the state has to enforce it, the township can't enforce state ordinances, is that what you're saying?
It's a state statute, it's enforceable by the state, unless we have an ordinance that mirrors that, we can't, we can't.
We can't do it.
We can't do that.
But we need to be very careful if we have a mowing ordinance, because there are other farms or far pets that have their grasses growing high. Now, do we end up having to have them mow everything down to whatever height we may want?
It's complicated.
So I think we have to be very careful.
Some of it's growing corn.
Right, I mean, I, I, I know what's going, I've seen it, I've driven through it.
Sure, I drove past it, yeah.
But I think the township needs to be careful if, if we do something to look at our townshipwide, I just.
The, one of the difficulties with a property maintenance ordinance relative to cross the street from you is it's a different zoning district, it's the F R, uh, farming residential zoning district, minimum of two acres, whereas you're in the R two, you're, you've got a half an acre, basically, uh, lots. The point being is that they're, they're, that zoning is for farms, so there was a farm there. And there were horses there actually keeping the, the grass under control for a while, but, uh, it's not the case now.
Well, under this, I wanted to read this to you so you understand, we're in the middle, under the state law, okay?
Right.
Which accompanied Mary's letter, what it says that, "A municipality which acts to control or destroy a noxious weed on a non-compliant landowner's property shall have the power to recover all expenses and costs incurred with the order from the non-compliant landowner."
Yes, I, I read that, so we do have the leverage.
Okay, so, so it would fall upon us, but we have to wait for the landowner to be compliant.
Non-compliant.
Or non-compliant.
Non-compliant.
Right.
Yep.
Now, I know this land is, what does he do with it, it's just vacant, why can't the township buy it off and do something with it? It's, it's not of any use to this guy, I'm sure, he's not cultivating it.
Nothing we can do.
There's nothing we can do, unfortunately, we're between a, a rock and a hard place.
Even if we wanted to buy it, the seller has to be willing, and I don't think he is.
So Barbara, that would also apply to the two homes on Pot House Road right there, just shrubber, you're right? That would apply also to that? You really can't do anything if a guy wants to grow weeds, as well, so what you can do about it?
The only thing we can do is do what Mary did within the confines of the law. She notified the landlord, or the home, or the landowner, that noxious weeds are growing, do something about it.
Alright, so we'll wait for their reply then.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public participation in any other items that, uh, aren't on the agenda? Would I like to move into executive session?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ready?
I wanna call the, uh, regular board, BOS meeting back in. We went over litigation of people and personal matters, and, uh, we have a motion, a couple of motions that we would like to make. Uh, one of them, uh, being that we would, uh, like to, uh, approve the, uh, radio tower that we have to, uh, the amount of, uh.
Well, let's, let's put it this way, uh, there's a motion to authorize Fred Perry, our chairman, to execute lease agreements with, uh, the, the applicant, uh, that we have been negotiating with for the, uh, communications tower on township, uh, properly, uh, property, provided that the, uh, lease is in the form satisfactory to the solicitor, and provided that the financial term is, uh, the monthly, uh, payment, uh, at the firm rate established in the, uh, request for proposals.
Or better.
Uh, or better, and, uh, that's the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to deny, uh, Ms. Scheller's request for a disability pension.
Second, second that?
Okay, and then, and, and the reasons would be for all of the, uh, legal reasons to be articulated by the township, that's correct.
Do I have a second to that?
That she and her legal counsel have agreed to.
Well, Barbara, I'd take that, I'd just say for all appropriate legal reasons.
Okay.
You got that one?
Is that a, got that, Medley? Okay. Okay, so I so move?
Second.
Any comments?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Do I, a motion or do?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, Mary, I jumped, my bad.
We need to move on with the mortgage with Wells Fargo. We are done with the mortgage, not only this building, but also for the substation. With that said, we can now sever our relationship with Wells Fargo.
Does that mean we paid the mortgage off?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Wells Fargo charges us fees to put money in, to take money out, Wells Fargo charges us fees to sneeze. So, I went out and, um, we have part of our general fund with National Penn Bank, specifically for our payroll. I went to National Penn Bank and said, "We would possibly like to move all of our general fund money over there, what can you do for us?" They have increased their interest rate for us, not only for our general fund monies, but for every account that we have with them.
Really?
So we're going from point one oh percent to point one nine percent.
Wow.
Which I know it doesn't sound like a lot of money, but in this.
Every little bit helps.
So, we have increased our interest rate, plus we're moving our general funds in with the rest of our general funds, making it easy to transfer money, not only for our payroll, but also to pay our bills. There's also no fees with us, which is the biggest thing. So I have the signature cards for them, um, if the board could sign, so I could get these accounts open with them.
Do we need to vote on that? Do we need to vote on that? To move the money or not?
To move the money, yes.
Do I need to abstain?
Are you involved with?
My wife works for Wells Fargo.
Yeah, probably, I mean, technically, legally, it's not an ethical problem, but I, I, I recommend it.
Okay.
Did we get any other quotes from D N B, um, and they do not match National Penn?
And have that finish still federal?
Do not go to finish still federal, because we do C Ds with them.
Okay.
So we already have stuff with them.
To what degree are we, are we diversified, if we do?
We also have money with Susquehanna, which is our Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company Fund, as well as our Open Space Fund. Now, with the Open Space Fund, I have opened up a money market account with Susquehanna at point six zero percent to put in a large chunk of money for our open s- space, which is going to give us a better interest rate if, than if we were to do C Ds. So as these C Ds can do, we can, we can move money in. So that solves the question that the Open Space folks have, that where can we put our money where we're gonna get more? This is through Valley Forge Asset Management Company, which is right down the road, who deals with Susquehanna. So, this way, again, I can swing money from the operating Open Space account, where the direct deposits come in for E I Ts, and swing it into the money market account. Again, there's no fees to do that.
Okay.
It's, it, it sounds like we've got three banks that we're.
We are.
Yes.
Four, if you count D N B.
That's right.
And Meridian has a, a, a small account with us too, with our, with our reserve and stuff.
Okay.
Okay, Martha?
So I guess I wanna word this by saying I wanna make a motion to make National Penn our prime.
Primary.
Primary financial institution, and to transfer all monies appropriately.
Yes.
Sounds good.
From Wells Fargo.
Right, and that's gonna be over several months, because I have to get the direct deposits changed over, and, you know, so it's not gonna happen overnight, but with, with over this next few months.
I'll second Martha's motion.
Is that, is that worded enough, okay?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
So moved.
Thank you.
I hear a word to, uh.
Yeah, Mary, thank you for doing all that work on that.
Thank you, Mary. I make a motion and end the meeting?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Bill wants to stay and talk some more.